It's called or ordered, City Council for September 17th. Let's have an invocation, Bobby Stunt View, Mr. Councilperson Ellis, Mike Lees.
Yes, let's see. Let's pray. Gracious God, we come once again seeking to serve you, seeking your guidance. Lord, touch our hearts, touch our minds. Guide us in the things that we do. Let us represent this city in the way that God would choose for us to represent it. And let us be mindful of the things that you would have us to do. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilperson White, Councilperson Yon.
Present.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Council Vice President Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Selective record reflects, seven members are present. Councilperson President Gill and Councilperson Sostovny is absent.
Can we get any discussion or motion to for the council budget workshop minutes of August 29?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? All right, and then we have the minutes for our regular council proceedings on September 4th. Can I have a discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Anybody else? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And then we have approval to the agenda, and we have an addition we would like to add to our agenda at 13A. Ed, go ahead and name it. Tell us.
At the end of last meeting, I asked, I mentioned that Dawn Spiker will be coming to approve, and that just didn't make the agenda, it's just an oversight. And so I'd like to add her 13A.
I would suggest we just make her 13, because actually I need to take off Julie Mormon. So, we'll take that off and replace that with.
Dawn Spiker works great. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
There's nothing else? All those in favor approve of the agenda, will that change? Say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so be it. Claims should be approved. Look first at our civil claims, there's $1,144,024.54. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On page nine, under the side box 88, it lists 403, 407, 409, more, Paw Paw. I don't know where Paw Paw Street is. Does anybody know?
Don't know. Is it Pam Paw? Pam Paw?
P-A-W, P-A-W, it says it one, two, three, four, five times.
There is Paw Paw on up.
It's not going to stop it, I just, I Googled it.
You did Google it?
I did Google it, and it did not pull up.
I can ask Andy, and he can let you know.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Max agrees with your Google, so.
Yep.
Apple and Google coming together, can't be real. All will be on that. Anybody else need to discuss or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for the total of $1,144,024.54.
Our motion in a second. If there's nothing else, let's.
P-A-M?
Yeah.
That exists.
That does exist. I know where they're.
Where is Pam Paw?
Al Park, Oak Park.
Yes, Oak Park, my district.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve claims. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Claims pass. And then we have Parks for $49,028.06. Anybody have anything to say about that?
Yes, I'm trying to find which page it's on. There is a claim for $22,000 or $2,200 and some dollars for McCoy's Nursery. And I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. This is not the first time that there have been claims for McCoy's Nursery. I have a problem when an employee is buying things from himself. I think that any time that there is an employee of the city that buys some things from himself, that there should be some quotes or bids in order to cover that.
On the last page four.
Yeah, page four. There's two claims.
But you're, you're not asking.
I'm not asking just to pull the claims. Yeah, this is on page four. There's one for $1,266.85, and the other is $992.67. And I just ask that there be some direction given as far as if a city employee has a business and is going to buy something, there needs to be something other than just going and buying.
Brian, do you know which employee is this? Do they work in the Parks Department?
Yes.
Yeah. Matter of fact, that's the leader of the green team. So I'm just asking that in the future, that there be either quotes or bids presented before that, that's done.
Is there anything else? If there's not, we will pick a motion.
I guess I just add that, I don't know what, if there's like an ordinance that details. I know we have to have employees that list other businesses that they have, so they have that on record. I don't know if there's anything.
Right. We have, we have a purchase policy for the Parks Department, the Parks Authority does. These, these purchases in particular don't meet the thresholds that require some of those things. I think maybe Mr. Ellis would like to see that changed under a certain circumstance.
I see.
I hope.
And normally, I would not see anything, but this is a city employee, and this is also basically, it's almost a department here. He's over the green team, and a lot of the things that the city is purchasing comes through that green team, and that's why I brought this up.
We've also been in situations where the city hasn't had a piece of equipment that, you know, he does have through his business, and we use without fee, without notice. And so it's, it's give and take, I think.
I was just curious with the, if there was anything we, like, that we have at this point, so that clarifies for me, I was just more curious.
I think there's a lot of gray area that could use some transparency.
You know, I'm, I really don't feel that when it comes to employees of the city, even when you, and you said that he uses some of his own equipment, well, we've bought enough equipment to do his, to do what he wants at home and to do the city. So that was one of the things, as a matter of fact, we've bought a couple of pieces of equipment from him. And, and if he can get quotes for a couple of pieces of equipment from himself, then he can also get quotes for anything that he wants to sell to the city.
Motion to approve the claims that's presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. If there's nothing else, all those in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you.
Report of the clerk.
Yes, sir. At this present time, I'd like to introduce Darryl Jackson. He is with Sister Max, and I'm going to let him do a brief information about the new system that we have that we started tonight for a first time.
Good evening, thanks for having me here. Appreciate it. Again, I'm Darryl Johnson with Sister Max Audio Video. We're a local provider here in Jeffersonville. We upgraded the sound system, and as you can tell, I'm still working some bugs out as you guys are talking, this is the little ringing that you're hearing, and I've got an iPad and trying to control all that as we're sitting over here. We also updated the video projection with a new laser projector, so there aren't no bulbs to replace anymore. Estimated lasts 20,000 hours on that projector, so that should last a good long while. Flat screen televisions here. And one of the things that Vicki and I talked about earlier was if you guys would want these screens angled for your viewing, we can actually do that. There's some articulation, would you tilt those down? So that's something that you guys could give us some feedback on as the council, how you would want those set. Any questions for me?
I just, I think we might have identified that mic three, which is my mic here, is what's causing a lot of the feedback, so. I don't hear it now.
Right.
But I think it.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, I'm trying to work on that right now on.
No, I appreciate that, I just want, I didn't know if that helped you at all.
Yeah, oh, it does help a lot.
We, we might have identified this source, so.
All right, go.
Can you hear us in the back?
Captain Moreland?
No.
Apparently, I mean, you pick up some words here and there, but general conversation, you can't hear it back there.
Yeah.
The bottom might be this.
The air.
Yeah. But it's, it seems like worse than.
Worse.
We've actually got the, yeah.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Turning into road stuff here.
But the director's coming out. We've also split this into two halves, so we can actually turn up the volume in the back half of the room independently from the front half, because obviously the feedback comes from the front half of the room.
Right.
So probably what we need to do is, is increase the volume in the back, so we can lower the volume in the front, minimize that feedback. But again, it's, we literally were dragging some foxes out of here this afternoon, trying to wrap this up in time for this meeting tonight, so I appreciate your patience.
Thanks, Darryl.
And thank you for the information.
One other thing is, I sent out an email to the people that have meetings in here, because we no longer are going to be using the little card. Everybody's going to have to have their own thumb drive, that we will be, it'll be formatted, so it's an all.
All right, you want to purchase those, or we have to bring them ourselves?
Sir, we've got some in our office. If you need one, we'll be glad to give you one. Because what you need to do is each time you use one, if you're all going to use it, and we'll be glad to show you how to do it, but you'll have to save it on a drive or something, because it will reformat it each time. And we would be glad to assist you, and Patsy's very good at that, we could, she would be glad to assist.
Patsy's our in-house expert.
All right, well, moving on to old business, we have Heather Metcalf with 2018 OR 56, an ordinance transferring certain funds, and this passed on the first and second. Is there anything new to add?
No, everything's the same.
We don't have any questions. Anybody?
Motion to approve on the third and final.
Second.
Motion in a second. If no more discussion, let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I was happy. Moving on to number 10, and there is Larry Wilder, an ordinance rescinding ordinance 2007 OR 50, replacing it with 2018 OR 57. Larry is absent.
I'll just take over from here, since Larry's absent. So this is, I think, the last time we're going to hopefully see this. This is the fireworks ordinance that we agreed on, we amended, we adjusted the final time, the latest time, we've discussed it in length. Everyone's really excited about the discussions we've had about it, and I think we're ready to vote for it on a third and final. To my knowledge, there's been no changes since we last met. So I'll make a motion to approve 2018 OR 57 on the third and final.
Gladly, second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 2018 OR 57.
Oh, wow.
Can I vote aye with prejudice?
Aye with a little dissent.
All right, moving on to, we have Heather Metcalf, public hearing on the ordinance of an additional appropriation.
I get to jump back and forth, back and forth. My name's every other name. This one was lowered, it looks like the overtime, you all wanted it lowered to the 5,000, that's the only change since the last one, so this is up for a public hearing tonight.
If we don't have any questions, we can open for a public hearing. Anybody here to speak for or against this additional appropriation? We'll see none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilpeople, have you got anything else, or I will take a motion. I say again, if there's nothing else, I will take.
I'll make a motion to pass, 2018 OR 58 on the third and final.
Got a motion and a second. Nothing else? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now to new business, Callie Yon, Keely Stingle Homeless Coalition update.
Yes, so I guess I am the assigned speaker, so I want to welcome up Keely Stingle with the Homeless Coalition. She has some more information about really the history of the Homeless Coalition, and so I will leave it in her more than capable hands.
Good evening. As Callie said, my name is Keely Stingle, I'm the executive director of the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana. Before you tonight, you have a presentation packet, very excited to see the new operating AV system, didn't know if that would be available for tonight, so you have the printed handouts in front of you, talking about, you know, I visited you all last year to talk about the update of the Homeless Coalition and tell you where we're at as an organization. And tonight, I want to kind of revisit how we got here as a community, why the Homeless Coalition is important to addressing many of the community needs that we have, and a lot of you have that experience it. And then also, talk about where we're going, and how you can get involved as well. So with that, I want to start out on the second page, looking at some of the data within homelessness. Homelessness in the city of Jeffersonville is not something new, this is something you're very familiar with as city council members, but I want to give you an idea of what the numbers say. So the most, the closest, the most agreed upon numbers that were released in 2015 came from a process called the point in time count. Some of you may be familiar with that. Our point in time count is something that a community does every year, on January 24th, when it is very cold outside, individuals and volunteers go out in communities and count the number of individuals who are homeless, either out on the street or in shelter. In 2015, our numbers were 298 was the total that we experienced in the eight county region, so it's not only Clark and Floyd counties, but includes some of the rural outline counties as well. The primary bulk of those were in Clark and Floyd counties. And in talking to private developers, that number, whenever they're trying to decide if they're going to develop in a community to gauge the need, they multiply that number by five, so we're looking at more like 1,500 people in the eight county region being, experiencing homelessness. So that's the most recent data that we have thus far, and we're really trying to build up on the ground game for whenever we do that count next January, to make sure we have a really accurate reflection of what the need is in the community. As you can see on the third page as well, it breaks down race and ethnicity breakdown, majority of those that were counted were white, reflective of the population, though those of minority status, also LGBTQ groups, are disproportionately represented within those that are experiencing homelessness. Also in 2015, the number of homeless children that were counted through that point in time count was over 50. But the most recent data from our school systems from Clark and Floyd counties count nearly 300 youth that are housing, or that are homeless or housing unstable. So there's a significant portion, and so the reason why I talk about that disparity between the two data sources is so that you know that this is a very small glimpse of the issue that we have in our community. With that, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the timeline. So many of you were engaged since the time the mayor put together the homelessness task force, but I think it's helpful for those who maybe are new to, new to that particular situation, as well as those in the audience, to talk about how did we get here? So you may recall, there was a police sweep of a homeless camp in the city of Jeffersonville while individuals left to go to a soup kitchen, they came back to their belongings completely gone. You, I'm sure you received phone calls about individuals that were upset by this, and the community really wanted to start conversation of how do we address this, and really proactively address this so it doesn't happen again in the future. So with that, the response from the mayor's office was to put together a homelessness task force, and that was done in 2013. And those individuals met consistently talking about how do we address homelessness in the region, and they also went through a planning process, did several community input sessions, and came up with a document called Vision 2025. And that document's available on IUS's website, if you ever were to search, Google search that, you're able to find that full document and link. That was released in 2015, and there are four key gaps that are identified, which is on the next page as well, and that was information sharing and coordination of services, as well as case management for general population homeless. If you're an individual and you fall into a specific category such as a veteran or a victim of domestic abuse, you're going to find services in the case management that you need. General population homeless have a lot more barriers to getting the resources and the connection to services that they need. The third thing that was identified was the white flag emergency shelter. You may have heard us talk about that and seen that in the news. Our white flag emergency shelter, we have operated as a result of this plan, but an emergency shelter is providing shelter during cold winter nights, and the general rule of thumb is when it's 35 degrees and below for four or more consecutive hours. So when it's really cold outside, we need a place for people to go, and in that plan, it was found that not only for our general population shelter do we have individuals, it's at and over capacity most of the time, but during the cold winter nights, there's hardly any room for anyone to get in. So it was a definite need that was identified. And lastly, that was a day shelter. So for individuals seeking employment, they would be able to have an address to put on their applications, a place to take showers and do laundry, that was another need that was identified. So in 2015 and 2016, that task force really came together to say, we need to do something about these key gaps that were identified, and in doing so, they wanted to create an organization, which is the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana. Those individuals came together, representing a whole, whole host of community interests, but also pulled together service providers and signed memoriam of understanding. So we identified the need of information sharing and coordination of services, and the MOUs between the agencies, which included Jeffersonville Housing Authority, Life Spring, and several others, came together to say, this is a need, we need to create an organization, and we're willing to be bought in. Many of them did not request funding from city of Jeffersonville and city of New Albany during this time, even though they had just lost HUD funding, because they were committed to ensuring that the vision of the Homeless Coalition was, was implemented. So in November of 20, so we received our tax determination status, our 501(c)(3) in June of 2016. So relatively new organization, still have a lot of work left to do, but what we've done so far is we did do that emergency shelter the first year of operation. So that was done in November 2016 through April 2017. We had 20 unique guests and 126 visits to the shelter, and leveraged 40 community volunteers. That season, the shelter was fully operated on community volunteers and continues to be operated off of community support. In June of 2017, I came on board, so as you might recall, September of last year was still getting to know the organization, the history, and really where we're going and determining strategic vision. So in October of 2017, the board of directors was led through the strategic planning process, and you have a copy of our summarized strategic planning document. So in that, we identified five key areas, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. But for, you know, for, what a great opportunity it is for our board of directors and the community to know where we're going, and that's really important for us to have established a mission, vision, and strategic goals that we can hold ourselves accountable to, as well as you all. So in November 2017, we started our second season of the white flag emergency shelter. We went from having 20 unique guests to having 81 unique guests, going from 126 visits to 740 visits to the white flag emergency shelter, quadrupled the number of volunteers from 40 to 156, as well as had representation from 24 community groups. So those volunteers donated nearly 2,500 hours, many of them your constituents, showing that not only are they passionate about addressing homelessness, and there are individuals who want to talk about addressing homelessness, but these are people in our community who are doing something to address it. So those are 156 individuals that you can call on to know that they're going to be an advocate to help addressing homelessness in the region. So in January 2018, we renewed municipal support with the city of Jeffersonville and the city of New Albany, and then we concluded our second season of the white flag emergency shelter in April of 2018, and we were open 60 nights the last season. We operate out of the Salvation Army on Green Valley Road in New Albany, and that was due to a partnership that we had, that was due to a partnership that we had with them. And then in May of 2018, we have just been recently awarded a grant from the Community Foundation of Southern Indiana for service coordination. You know, a lot of things that we've talked about are that individuals in need of services bounce from place to place to place without finding the services that they need, only to find out that they are not eligible for the services or for the providers that they've went to, and they've already been to three places already. So it increases the number, the amount of time that they are homeless, it is an impact to staff time of our service providers, and there's a lot of opportunity for us to help gain, help to streamline those services. So that is the purpose of that funding, so we'll be starting to implement that, and that's a multi-year grant from the Community Foundation.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So you had mentioned earlier what's the data that you use to determine how big the problem is homelessness, that it's in the eight county region?
Yes.
Does your organization cover all of those counties, or are you just Clark and Floyd?
Right now, we are Clark and Floyd county only. We are discussing a potential merger with an organization called Southern Indiana Housing Initiative, and they do represent the entire eight county region.
Wait a minute, those numbers of 740 visits versus 126, is that Clark and Floyd only, or is that all the counties?
Those were from any individuals that came to the shelter, which were from outline counties, were from Clark and Floyd as well.
We didn't target how many came from the city of Jeffersonville.
No, no, we have anecdotal evidence, but not anything in terms of our intake process.
And then what is a unique guest? Did I miss that?
Yeah, the unique guest is 81, 81 unique guests.
Yeah, what's unique?
The definition of unique guest. Yeah, so that question's asked a lot. So you, as an individual, are an unique guest, but every time you come to the shelter, it counts as a visit. So if you came to the shelter four times, we would count you as four visits, but one unique guest.
So it's just the individual?
The individual.
So only 81 individuals utilize the white flag?
Yes.
All right, that answers my question.
Okay. All right, so with that, I'd love to give you a little bit more information about the Homeless Coalition and where we're going. So our mission and vision, when we're thinking about our mission and what we are going to do, we're focused on three things: education and advocacy, increasing awareness. do, we're focused on three things: education and advocacy, increasing awareness, coordination of services, as well as influencing policy decisions. So those are the three key areas that we are focusing on to not only impact homelessness, but also its causes in the community. Our vision is to, so that everyone has the economic support, economic opportunity support and resources that they need to be self-sufficient, financially stable, and to also be housed long-term in quality, affordable housing. So the strategic plan that you have in front of you, there are five key goals on that. The first one is to ensure it's focusing on affordable housing. So you all had a study that was recently released that Jeffersonville will be short about 2,000 units, not in the near, not in the too near future. So it'll be in just a few short years that the housing stock is not going to be sufficient to meet the residents' needs of the city. And so that's something that we are being intentional about, is focusing on affordable housing. Thirdly, or secondly, is the generation of community buy-in. So I mentioned our White Flag Emergency Shelter, and we generate community buy-in through that shelter, because we are able to leverage the time and resources of community volunteers in order to do so. We also are focused on coordination, coordination of services and coordination of efforts of providers and services. So that is, we have monthly member meetings that we do every month, where we bring together over 20 individuals who represent different community groups and service providers to talk about addressing homelessness, but also how can we work together to do it more efficiently? So we do that every month, and we also, we have just been recently awarded funding for coordination of services to help really streamline the entry into services, to help reduce the amount of time that somebody is homeless. We also want to become the area information on homelessness. So we send out newsletters as well as press releases, really trying to communicate what potential solutions could be for addressing homelessness in our community. And lastly, we are identifying long-term sustainable funding as well. So some of the existing efforts, and I mentioned them briefly in talking about those goals. So service coordination, as I said, we do that through our monthly member meetings that we do. We also have partnerships at our White Flag Emergency Shelter. We partner with several community groups to do, we partner with LifeSpring. They block down an hour of their appointment times, the morning after a white flag night, at their federally qualified health center in Jeffersonville for any white flag guests who needed medical services the next day. And they also provided them transportation from their center to wherever else they needed to go. We also had a partnership with the Floyd County Health Department. They provided hep A and flu vaccines. We had a partnership with Volunteers of America that did free HIV testing. Any individuals that were, that had a positive status were then, were then referred to the Clark County Health Department, because they are the HIV care coordinator. So we were in partnership with them as well. And we also have partnered with TARP to provide free transportation for the guests to the white flag shelter. So if they, if an individual was in Jeffersonville, they were able to ride a TARP bus, switch buses, and then also make it to our site at no cost to them. We also want to focus on the streamlined entry into services. One of the things that's really important is that we identify the eligibility criteria of service providers, so that we know that on the onset. So we're not sending individuals who don't meet the minimum eligibility criteria to places where they're not going to be able to get services. We also are doing our White Flag Emergency Shelter. We're gearing up again for that this year, and we're hoping to increase the number of volunteers to 250 this year. Pretty lofty goal, but we think we can do it. Really identified some process improvements and know that it's a valuable experience and being able to hear from our volunteers what White Flag does for them. I'll give you an example. We had our White Flag Volunteer Appreciation Event. We had a volunteer speak, and he said, "White Flag allows me to see people. When I see individuals on the street, it's easy to pass by and not think twice. It's easy to drive by and not think twice, but when I am volunteering for White Flag, it requires me to stop and see people for the first time and really see individuals as humans, and that's a human issue." And got teary-eyed in talking about how impactful volunteering for White Flag is. It's just a few hours a month, and he's able to make not only a difference in the lives of somebody else, but also his own life. So it's just as meaningful for the community volunteers to volunteer for White Flag as it is for the guests who seek shelter that night. Lastly, we are doing public education sessions as well. We've done a six-part seminar series, and we're halfway through that. We have two more, two more set up to talk about White Flag, so we are really trying to drum up the amount of, build up the community support, as well as the number of volunteers for this upcoming season. So I gave you a little bit of the, I gave you the data for White Flag, but that's where we're at now. White Flag is more than just data. It's an impact to the community, and not only, what's so unique about this White Flag model? You know, in Louisville, when they have White Flag, existing shelters open up their doors and let anyone and everyone come in. They already have paid staff support, and it's not that challenging to adjust their regular accommodations to that. What we do, we operate out of a community facility that has day programming, that has a lot of other needs. Out of the Salvation Army is where we've operated the last two years and will operate next year. It's very challenging to do that, but it's because there is a community partner who is very committed to addressing this issue. And not only that, we don't, we might have additional, we will have paid staff support for our volunteers next year, but our facility, our volunteer, or our shelter cannot operate without the number of community volunteers that we have. It requires about 10 community volunteers each evening to open the White Flag Shelter. And we are doing it differently in Louisville, because we know that people in Southern Indiana care and are passionate and are willing to give their time to help. So lastly, I want to talk about how you can help. We'd love for the council member to create a White Flag team, that'd be great, or the City of Jeffersonville and STAT. So know that that invitation is always there. If you're looking for something to do overnight, we'd be happy to have you there and have you interact with our guests as well. It's an extremely meaningful experience. We really want to focus on time, talent, or treasure. So if there's a service that you can provide to the Homeless Coalition or a nonprofit that you care about, we encourage you to volunteer, encourage you to donate your time or services and resources to them. And lastly, treasure. You all have shown that you are committed to addressing homelessness by supporting our organization. I know we are grateful for the amount of support that you give us, and know that without your help, we cannot do what we're doing. We could not have had the growth that we've had over the last year, and we're going to continue to grow. So those are the three ways I encourage you personally, you as a council, and all the community members to get involved with homelessness or a cause that you care about. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions that you might have. On the very last page, you'll also see some of the key outcomes that we've had over the last year.
One question I had, what is the address or description of where the White Flag Shelter is now?
That is at Green Valley Road, and that is at the Salvation Army in New Albany. For the second part of the season, that is operated out of their gymnasium. They have the Angel Tree program going on the first part of the, first part of the season, so we're unable to operate out of that space during that time. So right now, we are contingently, you know, we could operate out of their small house during the first part of the season, but we are also looking for another site that would better fit our needs for the first part of the season.
I noticed you said that TARP and the LifeSpring's medical was no cost to the person or persons receiving the thing. Now, does that mean there's no cost at all?
That is an in-kind donation. That is something that they're providing, they are doing that on their own. Another partnership that we have with TARP that extends beyond the White Flag Shelter is we, and TARP over in Louisville, the Coalition for the Homeless, what they do, they get half-priced TARP tickets for any service providers that serve those who are homeless. The tickets are to be used for individuals experiencing homelessness, and we, as the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana, are able to offer that program to our members now, and that was just started last month. So that's another partnership that we have with TARP. We did have a, we did have a meeting on Friday to talk about a route extension for a particular Charleston road extension in New Albany. And at the end of the meeting, we left time to talk about other regional needs, which definitely included the city of Jeffersonville. So the mayor and I spoke about that this afternoon, about ways that we can further partner with TARP to help meet our needs as well.
Another, I know a little bit about this, as you said on the board, but I came off prior to you taking over. Is there any restrictions on whether someone identifies from Jeffersonville to use a Louisville White Flag versus a White Flag that's over here and vice versa? Would you turn somebody away from Louisville? Or would you, how is that?
We have not. We have not turned away anyone.
Will they turn away our people?
Huh?
Will they turn away our people?
So the challenge with going over to Louisville, no, they do not turn away residents from Indiana often. As I'm sure you're aware, we have had issues in Southern Indiana, and Louisville has really been the person solving them or addressing them. We have limited resources, and so that's why we see it's a great opportunity to operate here, especially for individuals who are recently, they've recently been released from incarceration, or those that are on probation and cannot cross state lines. That's a challenge for them as well. So there are some limitations for our residents being able to get the shelter that they need by going to Louisville.
Oh, I had a few more.
Go for it.
I know the investment is pitched at $75,000 in our budget. Does New Albany City Council contribute any money, and so how much?
So as of January in 2018, New Albany City Council committed $50,000 towards the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana. They were approached at $75,000.
And does Clark and Floyd Counties?
Clark and Floyd Counties have not contributed to the organization.
Okay. What about the town of Clarksville?
Town of Clarksville has not either. They were approached very early on with the organization, and then I've had preliminary discussions last year with them, but no, they have not committed to funds for the organization.
And the funds that are generated by the municipalities, what does that money specifically go to?
Those funds that are generated are for operating costs of the organization, to be able to coordinate the services, to coordinate the White Flag Shelter, any of the other operational costs that we have.
What are the operational costs?
The operational costs include staff support, being able to buy supplies for the White Flag Shelter, being able to coordinate services among the programs in terms of the seminars that we do, as well as coordinate the services of the providers as well.
And does it go through salaries?
Staff support, yes.
What is your budget, annual budget?
Our most, our approved annual...
Last year's, your...
Yes, so our approved annual budget was $150,000.
So you had met with the mayor earlier this afternoon?
Yes.
And I have not talked to the mayor directly, but the line item was kept in the budget, and I think it was, it wasn't the intent, I think, for the funding to be removed from the budget, and the mayor is in support of renewing the funding for this year, and I don't, do you know?
Yeah, so that's the conversation that we had today. And talking about this, because we were talking about what is the purpose of the allocation for the Homeless Coalition? And what the purpose is, is that the organization has been created after the years of community planning that the City of Jeffersonville really led, and our role is to address homelessness, and that's the funding for that, not necessarily to be funding a particular nonprofit, but really to focus on homelessness. That is the line item of budget is to address homelessness, and our organization is filling that need.
Is it inappropriate for you to have people tell you where they're from, where they last stayed?
At the White Flag Shelter?
Yeah.
No, that's a question we can add to our questionnaire.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's probably a difficult question to answer.
We talked about this in our budget workshop, didn't we? We plugged it back in under...
Yeah. So it's under gaming, which is where it was last year, and because we knew we needed to have kind of finalized or a really good idea of what our budget was going to look like for tonight's meeting, we went ahead and added it back in with, with the understanding that if there was not support, that it could be removed much easier than it could be if we were to add it back in. So as our budget stands today, it is currently in our budget for this coming year.
Well, I'm supportive of keeping it in. I think the City of Jeffersonville has, there is a, we should be a major proponent of the organization and what they're doing. I would, I didn't realize, I guess, that such a large portion, I guess I shouldn't realize, but with such a large portion being, you know, contributive, their operational budget can be attributed by the municipalities, first, I would, I would hope that the town of Clarksville would become more involved, you know, as a regional partner. But then secondly, we may need to talk about what kind of annual reporting we want to see specifically on a consistent basis to allow for transparency on how those funds are being used. And I'm not saying that this is in any way inadequate. I appreciate some of the numbers that you've brought, but I think maybe we need to define what we would expect to see with that continued support.
Or potentially even representation on their board directors or having some sort of, I'm not sure, are there, do you know if there's any city employees or liaisons that are on your board?
No, there is not currently.
Who appointed, who appointed that board?
It is not an appointment. It's a 501(c)(3). So whenever the board was created...
Right.
There were individuals from that task force that were involved. Amy Burnett has been involved for a very long time with our organization, and she is with Frost Brown. Todd serves on our board. Cory Bledsoe with Louisville Rescue Mission is also on our Board of Directors. We have representation from New Albany Housing Authority. Would love to have conversations about how we can get Jeffersonville Housing Authority further engaged with the organization as well, now that you have a director. We do have LifeSpring, Center for Women and Families, St. Elizabeth's. Some, some of the others include River Hills Economic Development. So we have several organizations and community partners on our board.
I'd just add that I'm in favor of it. And to put it in context, we spend approximately $650,000 on our animal shelter, and not even $100,000, and we're debating that, we're not really debating it tonight, but except the conversation, $75,000 for humans. So just, just perspective.
And we'll add, one of the things that we're able to provide the value add, and while it is so important to support the operational costs of the organization, is because we're able to leverage the amount of community volunteers. Like I said, the City of Louisville does not do a White Flag Emergency Shelter that utilizes volunteers, but it's really showing the potential as well as the really desire to give back to the community that Southern Indiana has. So that's one of the things that we are also able to offer. And that does keep the costs low, but that does require operational support to do so.
If requested, you know, just for transparency reasons, if we requested a copy of your budget to justify, you know, the money, would that be...
You have not requested, but we can provide that.
Could that be provided?
Yes.
Thank you.
Should I send that to Vicki?
That...
I don't mind, but I can send that to them.
Okay.
Yeah, on the board.
How many staff do you have?
We, right now, have myself. We have a White Flag Support Specialist who was with us since last season and has held on to the next season. And we are going to be bringing on a service coordinator for the project that we've identified as streamlining efforts, streamlining entry into services. So we'll be bringing that person on very shortly.
So it's primarily you, and then you have as, as the White Flag ramps up, you have some of the Clark County here?
Yes, during the White Flag season, we will hire three site captains, which will provide volunteer support and oversight. So as we had unprecedented growth, as you see within our numbers, there were some growing pains. So we know that we need somebody there kind of in an authoritative or authoritarian figure so that our guests and our volunteers have a resource if they have any questions, and also for rule enforcement, we feel that that is very important. And having site captains available at the White Flag Shelter, paid staff support will help address any of the issues we had last season.
Do you know off the top of your head, where you're going?
I'm good.
Okay. Who you had paid to be the captain and to be the support staff last year?
Who we had last year? Last year, we did not have paid support staff. That stayed throughout the entire season of white flag. We, if we had enough volunteers, we allowed them to stay there without paid staff support. So however, when there weren't enough volunteers, we had a white flag coordinator as well as had a white flag support specialist who did a lot of the overnight shifts.
And that was a paid person?
Yes.
Who was that?
The name of the white flag coordinator was Andrew Raker and the name of the white flag support specialist is Celeste Cook.
Any other questions?
All right.
I appreciate the support that Councilman Owen and Councilman Samuel have presented. I echo that support and would recommend that we keep the funding in. I can just attest, I'm not on the Board of Directors, but sometimes I feel like it because I've seen all of the work and just in also serving in other capacities, I've seen what the homeless coalition is doing and the growth I'm excited to see. I think we're finally starting to see how big the issue is and look at how we can continue to offer these services for that particular vulnerable population. So, thank you.
Don't judge my amount of questions by supporters.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Spirit Time, I really appreciate it. I will get with Vicki with our Board of Director approved annual operating budget. I'll get that to you. Any questions you have, my email address, either one of those at the end will get to me, but I will give you my personal, it is personal for the organization is K S T I N G E L at sewinhomeless.org.
And I think the other thing from what I'm hearing too is just more continued reporting. So I don't know what that looks like, maybe quarterly reporting or just a-
Oh, I don't think it's-
I mean, I don't-
So.
Okay. I just wanted to, while she's here, we want to clarify what our expectations are for that type of reporting.
I don't mean to be overly burdensome or to inject too much government into what you're doing because I don't want to slow you down.
You can do that.
But I think, you know, reporting like this on an annual basis is important and I think it is important that we see those budget, you know, budgets and just to know, you know, for transparency where our dollars are going.
Absolutely. And any thoughts that you have in terms of what specific metrics you're looking for? Now our strategic plan, we are going to be implementing that over the course of 2019. So we have had actionable items move forward on the strategic plan as well over the last year, but that's something we are holding ourselves accountable to as well. But any other metrics that you would like to propose, I'd be happy to sit down and talk about what's going to look best, what speaks to you as a council, what your priorities are and how we can get there.
Sounds like you've been busy the past year and few months.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Give us really good information, I think, just be informed of some of the questions that were asked and if you can incorporate and take the presentation next week.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's probably better to be here in June or July so we don't have a last minute budget snap through.
Sure, sure. Thanks, Mr. Smith. All right. Any other questions?
All right.
All right. Thank you all so much.
All right. Moving down the West, we have Heather Metcalf. Oh, yeah, Dawn Spiker, we've changed, Dawn Stryker. Oh, my gosh, how can I forget? Spyker. And Ms. Dawn.
Before Dawn, so I'm just curious, who does the design work for these?
A former student, so I sit down with them for about an hour and say, I think we're looking for something like this.
They're so good.
They are good.
Anyway, give them kudos.
I will do that. Typically, I come before you with tons of pictures, but tonight I'm a little exhausted. We've been on the, we call it the Triangle Lot, but it's got a new name, Picasso Point, all day today learning, I learned how to put in 24 parking stops with rebar and all sorts of craziness, so I'm a little, a little tired, so I apologize. But what I wanted to do is give you just a quick report out on basically this year in a nutshell and then explain to you what's, what you've got there, those little invitations in front of you. So just kicking us off this year in the spring, some of you were in attendance for this, but we had Shakespeare at Big Four Park. We dedicated the Hoosier Hardware Flood Wall mural. That was awesome and very well done. We installed and dedicated a sculptural drinking fountain underneath the pavilion. So if you've not had a chance to see that, you should, it's pretty amazing. We, back in December, included 13, actually all the fifth grade at Thomas Jefferson Elementary had a presentation on Picasso and they all were encouraged and they all did participate in applying to a public art initiative as a professional artist would. So they had to fill out an application, they had to create a small maquette, so it was very formal. We had adjudication here at City Hall and 13 designs were chosen to become the Picasso on a pole project. So hopefully you'll come to the dedication, we'll talk about that in a second, but you'll see their realized work in real life size. They're enormous and they adorn the perimeter of that, that parking lot. We've got an aerial flood wall mural that has been installed and it's pretty fabulous. So if you're walking over the, the Big Four Bridge and you look down on that storage unit, you'll see a new piece down there. We've got two sculptural bike racks that are currently being fabricated by two different artists. Those should be installed next month. As I said, we're transforming a parking lot into a pretty amazing gathering space that's amazingly colorful. We are talking actually tomorrow to the art team that was chosen from Indianapolis who will be creating the riverfront sculpture by the wharf. I think many of you either were there or saw some of the footage from Steamboat Nights. Friday night, not so great, started a little late, but Saturday was pretty fabulous and it was just packed with people and they absolutely embraced the night. It was, it was inspiring, to say the least. And in the middle of all of that, we as a public art commission accomplished something pretty awesome, which is to submit a 121-page document for arts and cultural accreditation to the state of Indiana. So we'll see if we get accredited. We'll find out towards the end of October. They're adjudicating at the beginning of October. Towards the beginning of the year, early in spring, we secured $250,000 grant from the Indiana State Tourism Board. A lot of that funding has been spent directly on the Triangle Lot or Picasso Point and some other features that will be down in the arts area, arts and cultural area. And that leads me to the wonderful little handouts that are before you. So what you've got are three things. One, that is the white one that's super colorful, that's the celebration for the NOCO Arts and Cultural Districts. So as council people, I really hope that you'll come out. It's the last Saturday of this month. It's a celebration that will be held at the grassy area right there in the Picasso Point or next to the Vintage Fire Museum. We've learned that weather is not our friend, so we decided to go ahead and get one giant tent to cover that entire grassy space. So we're going to have music, food will be cooked by the fire department down there on the grill. We'll have, all the large oversized games will be out. There'll be discussion about what that lot is meant to be used for. A lot of people think it's a water park and we're like, nope, not a water, not a water park, but here's what it is. So we're going to do some explaining of how you use it and why it's transformed and also what's coming up and what people can look forward to. And there's going to be art activities down there as well. So it'll be, it'll be a fun day for all. It's from 11 to 1. If you come, don't feel like you have to stay that whole time, just pop in and say hi, that'd be great. And then the second piece of information, I gave you two little things. They are both for the same event and that's for the Sugar Skull Festival, the cultural festival in October. That's the Dia de los Muertos festival. So that has been, we did that two years ago, it was very successful, so we brought it back. The special part of that festival is it's a real collaboration with Greater Clark Schools. We've got Spring Hill and Parkwood Elementary Schools that have been working with Fernando Moya and Fernando is from Ecuador and Fernando is teaching those kids how to create panpipes and they've each created their own panpipe. They'll be playing those panpipes with Fernando and his band called Yappa at the festival, which is pretty special. We've got Jeffersonville High School involved in their pride program. They're, they helped to host the race, the 5K race before the event. That was super successful for them two years ago and they've already got tons of people signed up for that, so it'd be great if you want to be a part of that. But more than that, throughout the day, 10 to 5, it's cultural awareness and education for our community. Charlestown High School and Middle School, they're involved as well. They help with the make and take tents so people can come, kids can come, families can come and they can create a Mexican folk art piece and go home with it. So that's part of the fun as well. So the music and authentic food. IU Southeast has a Latino radio station, so part of the committee, we've got some people that speak Spanish that will be going on the radio station to promote the festival in a couple of weeks. So I wanted you to be aware of that and I'd like you to come if you can.
Authentic food, will it be in the form of food trucks? How are you doing that?
Right. So the one thing we struggled with two years ago is we actually went around to every single Mexican restaurant, truly authentic Mexican restaurant from Clarksville all the way through Clarksville and Jeffersonville. We had a lot of commitments, but we had very little follow-through. So what we decided to do is we connected with Greater Clark Schools with Aramark with their food truck. But what we did is a former Jeffersonville High School student, Marisol Muniz, came forward and she's on the committee. She put together basically the menu and got all the recipes together and is sharing that with Natalie from Aramark. So the Aramark food truck is making authentic recipes based on Marisol's recommendations.
Lastly, are you taking sponsors for the 5K?
Actually Taste of Jeffersonville sponsored the entire thing.
Okay, so just, so you're not asking for any more?
Nope. I'm just asking for you guys to come out and have a good time. That's it. Does anybody have any questions?
I would just add a couple of things. Dawn, you had mentioned that, that we finished 121 or two-page-
Yeah.
...document that went up. Just to give you credit, because you pulled it together and did a lot of the writing with some other staff, but I know you were driving force behind that. The city appreciates that. And then also, we, I'm not sure if anybody heard the podcast, but AIM Accelerate Indiana Municipalities did a podcast on our, on this area down here and it was, it was really good and it highlighted redevelopment and the mayor and Dawn and the public art movement. So it's, it was really neat and I appreciate, you put in a lot of effort, appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Jeffersonville is actually also, this is kind of a neat thing I found out just three months ago, there were some writers that came from across the nation and visited with Sewon Tourism. And Sewon Tourism brought all these writers from across the United States in one bus down to the arts area just to kind of see what was developing right then at that time. And this was before we had it looking as good as it does now. One of those writers went back and was from Pennsylvania, from Philadelphia and we are in their newspaper and they talked about how Jeffersonville was like this up and coming place and how they were really inspired when they were here. So I was proud, proud of what we were doing, so.
This might be an ignorant question, but where does NOCO come from?
Yes. So NOCO stands for N-O, is North, N-C-O is Court, so north of Court Avenue.
Thinking like North Common and North-
Yeah.
North Court, okay.
Yep.
Dawn, I want to thank you for the beautiful job that you've done on that tank down there. Every time-
Well, no, I didn't do it, Wilford Sick did it, but yeah.
But every time I'm in that district and I see that tank and like see, I grew up seeing that tank down there.
Yeah.
It's just beautiful, it's amazing.
Good. We get, we mostly get positive remarks. We had a couple that aren't so positive, but for the most part, it's all good and they love that it's colorful. I will say today I was excited while I was down there because I noticed there was a company taking a bunch of equipment off of that little outbuilding right outside of it, which is a good sign for us because that means that Indiana American Water is getting rid of all the stuff that was in that building and that we're going to have access to that soon. So that's exciting. And they have not filled the tank back up since Wilford was painting on it. So it's also a positive for us.
Were you using that?
They were. So when we were doing the top of the tank, a year and a half ago, we had to, part of the obstacle was not only the hazard mitigation plan, which we had to put together and that was huge, we'd never done that before, but it was also how do we paint this safely while it still has half a tank of water in it? So it was decided not to paint the perimeter of the tank, but instead to focus on the top first. And then Indiana American Water really only used that for reserve, so it wasn't a primary tank. And they said that they had, they would be draining it after the fall season and then filling it back up, but they've just never filled it back up.
And that was because of condensation?
Yeah, so that was another challenge because of the condensation on the sides of the tank while we were painting, so, yeah. So hopefully we'll see you guys at the dedication and celebration and at the cultural festival. Thanks.
Thank you. Always good to see you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And let's see if I can get my act together, know where we're going next. How about Heather Metcalf, an ordinance transferring second fund, you're on.
I have a transfer here from the San Tati Department for environmental fees and that should finish them out for the rest of the year.
Make the motion approved 2018 or 59 on first and the second.
Got a motion and a second. There's no more discussion, all in favor. Go down.
Hi.
Close. All right, motion carries.
What was that number, I'm sorry, 59?
59. And then Heather Metcalf, it looks like you're up again, a public hearing on an ordinance for appropriation and tax rates.
Yay, this is the biggie. This is the budget for 2019. And I gave you all a list of the changes that I had from the two meetings that we had and an updated summary sheet for all of that. And also realize that the levies and the tax rates are advertised high at the moment because our NSS values are not certified yet. And then the DLGF will lower them to what it needs to be.
The changes have been made in the document that was emailed out though, right?
Yes.
I'd just make a comment that, this is a public hearing? It is a public hearing, but I'm not commenting. Probably not. Not going to do that first. All right, well then let's open the time for public hearing. Is there anybody present to speak for or against this resolution? Seeing none, we will close public hearing and now we go- Okay. I just was going to say that I'm not in favor, I'm not going to vote in favor of this. There's many things I'm certainly supportive of, but I think we're cutting it too close on some of our funds. We're spending basically all of our Lloyd fund and that is very concerning because we usually try to use that for capital purchases and we're going into that more and more, that's just one small example, but again, there's many things I'm supportive of. I'm not supportive of the six firemen, I'm supportive of three. And that was another thing that is a concern, is being able to sustain that. And so I just, a couple of minutes I have a chance to explain anything else, I just wanted to say that upfront. Anybody else have a two cents to add in?
Nathan, was it primarily the Lloyd that was concerning? Were there any other funds that you-
Yeah, I don't have my notes, but-
That's okay, I just, I don't want to-
Yes. Well, we will put our, if you would Heather, what are the dates here that things have to occur on? Could you refresh our memory on this thing?
Tonight is the public hearing and then your next meeting will be your adoption on October 1st.
And then Heather, and the reason that we're adopting October 1st is because for you, you need to have it-
Request from the Department of Homeland Government- Request from the Department of Public Government Finance was asked to everyone to basically push those dates up a little bit. It's not required to adopt until prior to November 1st, but the quicker that we can get our budgets adopted, the quicker they can start working on the budgets and having them actually approved, because the DLGF has a requirement that they have to have all budgets certified by December 31st instead of February 15th. It's just a big date for them.
Once we, once you get all the approvals and everything for the budget, what is, how long does it take for you to take that and then to be able to submit it to the DLGF? How much time do you need?
I have to submit it within forty-eight hours of
Okay.
adoption.
I'm not gonna vote for this budget, because I see that with some departments, it's more like the tail wagging the dog than the dog wagging the tail. So I'm gonna vote against this budget.
Well, I'll change my three-day vacation for the October 1st meeting, so we better pass the budget on that today.
I know. I leave October 6th, because I also had that in mind.
I request a roll. Scott, I request a roll call, please.
And now, this is, when we do vote on this, this is
The first.
Or yeah?
The first.
Just the first, right?
Correct. So we can progress forward regardless of the outcome, I suppose. I said that poorly, but I think you know what I mean.
This is not concrete
Correct.
prior to October 1st.
Correct. And I do, what I do hope is if people do want to vote against it, which is entirely, I get the points that everybody is making, then let's be prepared to fix it. Let's be prepared, because if these have to be turned in, when they have to be turned in, we need to quickly decide what we are for, not just what we're getting. And I have issues as well that I'd like to see addressed. And I'll ask a question before we put it to vote, or if anybody else has anything. Do we know any more about what the county, do we have any more insights about the county's decision on the upcoming vote that they may be having on the jail tax? Does anybody have anything? Have you heard anything last? Do you know anything?
I won't, I mean, I don't have anything specific, but the feeling that I've gotten is that it will pass.
And do you, do we have the insight as to what the number is that they're going to shoot?
No. That was a specific, that question was not answered when I
And do the, Heather, a question for you, you may not know, because it's county stuff, are all their dates the same as our dates?
No.
And are they later than we are?
Yes.
They're getting, I think they're, they need certified numbers.
Their council meetings are the second meeting of the month, so I believe it's the second Monday of October. Is there adoption?
But are there, are there deadlines from the state the same as ours?
Like, do they have
For DLGF?
to the DLGF the same as we do?
Yes.
But will, because of the way our meetings lie, we will not be able to know the outcome of their decision while we pass our budget?
Right.
So that's something else that everybody needs to consider. You're looking at potentially a million dollars of not, now we not getting funded in edit. So I don't know, you know, each person will have to make their own determination. Do you factor that in beforehand, not knowing, or will you be prepared to suffer the blow, you know, after the fact? So those are questions for each person to ask themselves. Is it proper to say that, if, let's say we pass the budget, then they pass a tax, which then affects our budget, that DLGF will give us an opportunity to correct our budget, amend it?
You can change the budget through the additional or reduction process that you do almost every week.
So once we send it up November 1st, if the county does something that affects our revenues, we can't do anything about that?
We can until in January.
Then we can adjust the numbers in January.
Okay.
First meeting in January or whatever. Which, and just for, just for transparency, so Heather, the potential
Technically, you could go ahead and do it before January 1st, expect a big change in the law. You'd round out, the county did something, I, 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 but if they do that, you can come back and just quote and read and say, in fact, we can't rely on your production.
And just to make sure I have the right numbers, so the estimated impact would be about 724,000 in our edit.
One tenth of a percent.
Yes. And then, but looking at just
One tenth of a percent? If there were, that's all between, nothing there at all.
And then, based on kind of our estimates, how conservative we are with numbers, we're really looking at having to find like around 200,000 to make that work.
Right.
So we're not looking at like a mammoth 7.25, it's more like 200, 100 to 200, just based on what our estimates
To be a revenue neutral, yes.
Yes.
And not to continue
But it's still a significant chunk of money that we'll have to consider.
So just to make sure I have the story straight, in case somebody in the public doesn't know, it's the county council is coming up short. They're considering implementing a jail tax to offset, you know, their general fund dollars going towards the jail, and that essentially is going to eat into our income tax dollars in edit, correct?
Which they already gave in their income tax dollars, legislation they passed.
But that won't take effect
And the city, and the city was
That won't take effect until 2020.
That wasn't good, though.
The city was supportive, the city was supportive of the legislation passed by the General Assembly to get them out of the hole that they got themselves into a decade ago. And, you know, we sustained stagnation of our growth to our, you know, funds because of that legislation that we supported sucked up and said, hey, you know, we'll, you know, go with this, because they really didn't have much option. But now that's not enough. And since they've got the legislation passed, we're also, they're also going to implement these new taxes.
The bulk of the growth of the income tax comes out of
Right. Right, and that's, that was the next point I was gonna make.
Which, by the way
The bulk of the income tax that's generated in Clark County
Yeah.
comes out of Jeffersonville, primarily probably out of River Ridge, but
Well, and also, we are only guessing what we even think that tax number might be. They have the ability to make any number that they want without any checks.
And we don't have any grounds for appeal, other than, hey, guys.
Change the legislation and make it retroactive?
Well, because if I'm, another point that I want to make sure, when making my decisions, I want to make sure it's clear, they're gonna have a one-year shortfall, and yet this tax can go on into
Indefinitely.
So they're gonna correct it, and then we hopefully rely on them to withdraw a tax of which they've put in, and we know that happens all the time. I mean, there's always government
Government always
withdrawing things that they begin
Yeah, taking
But that's correct, right? That this is a one-year shortfall.
Kind of like thinking that the tolls are gonna end after they finance the bridge.
Well, and I think that's why the proposal was a one-year shortfall, that instead of imposing jail tax, we're going to do this here, and we're agreeing with various entities. And, okay, let's more help make up the shortfall in county.
And
One year, we'll give you this, Jeffersonville give you this, Florida, everybody give you this, and all, that way there's not this jail tax that continues to go on.
Yeah.
So to be perfectly clear, the city of Jeffersonville is very much willing and ready to work on it in their local agreement to avoid new taxes, correct? Am I getting that right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just making sure that I'm getting it correct.
I'll speak for myself as a council member, and that I would
I'm sorry?
But I'll speak for myself as a council member
The problem I have with that is that next year, they could come back with the same thing and propose the tax again.
It can be at any time.
I mean, that's a very real, very real possibility.
They could
I agree, I agree.
They could quadruple the tax.
So in the end, I think we need to do what we need to do, and if they mess something up, then we just need to fix it.
We have to deal with it.
Yeah.
It sounds, it sounds like we can make a better informed decision after their meeting and still not be messed up for next year.
Yeah.
But we have the ability to either pass legis, pass an ordinance going into effect January 1st, or make adjustments January 1st, regardless of what they decide to do.
All right, while you get another crack at it, let's go ahead and
Make a motion to approve
Go, thank you.
2018, what is it?
Sixty.
Sixty.
We are ahead.
We are ahead.
Did you make a motion?
I did, to approve on the first and second reading.
You go ahead and say it.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in the second.
And there was a request for a roll call, though. I believe
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Yon?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Council Vice President Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
The ayes have it.
What's the ordinance number on that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, first and second reading.
Yes.
That was first and second reading. And I'll just mention out there, too, there are a couple of things that I'd like to see addressed in there as well, and voting yes is moving it. This is quite honestly, I don't know what we'd do if we don't move it, so.
We, we let it feed the fireworks ordinance, or we talk about it first?
That's what I was gonna say, there's many things in here that I don't agree with, but we also want to talk about fireworks ordinance for four and six months.
All right, it looks like now that we are two party heads, and I believe Heather had something she wanted to
Yes, also on a, on a note with the budget, I appreciate all of your help with all of that. I think it went pretty smooth this year, which was nice. And so you're aware, the salary ordinance will come to you at the next meeting for your approval. There are some changes on there that were kind of discussed when the pay range just came through, and that's changing some of the titles instead of cash coordinator and then a coordinator of animal
It's not anything fiscal, it's just the administration's policy.
Right, it's just title, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it shouldn't be anything surprising. My question, I have a position that's open in the Finance Department that I have a really great candidate for. At the moment, the pay range that the prior employee was at is where I would like to hire her at. It's currently more than the 25% that's allowed at the salary grid that is today, but it is within 17% of the grid that's going to be approved in January, so, or that you approve for January. So my question is for approval to hire this person at the rate of the same that was there before. And then it would be not getting an increase come January, it would be the same.
So that position, that what you would like to offer is 17% of the salary range that will take effect in January?
In January, yes.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, anybody else? Motion in a second? Although
I was just asking, HR, they support it?
Yes.
Do they comment?
Who left?
Patty Bruno, Odessa Bruno, the administrative assistant.
Was this posted, or was it?
It was not.
It was not posted.
All those in favor, signify that I've seen aye?
Aye.
All is posed? Thank you. Any other department heads present, wanna say aye? No? City Council attorney report, that's the quickest one we've had. And public comments, do we have anybody signed up for public comments? No public comments, and now we have council comments. Councilperson White?
Thank you. Just to reiterate, to make sure I understand, and that if we, we are trying to enter into an inter-local agreement with the county in order for them not to have to pass a new tax, and if we did that, then that would help for their fix, for their budget shortfall for the next year.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, I think if you was all in the board, anybody should know we, basically got, see well.
I missed the budget meeting, the last budget workshop, because I was in the new urban enterprise zone meeting, so I apologize for that. I wanted to go back to, back in, I believe it was March, maybe February, we had a presentation from the YMCA, and a request for $5,000. It's my understanding, a committee with finance, that we have $20,000 in special projects that was appropriated in this year's budget that has not been
Special projects, that's part of the gaming revenues?
Yes, part of the gaming revenues that has not been utilized this year. So just wondering if there would be a will to revisit the request for the $5,000 for the YMCA. So anybody have
I would support it, as YMCA has been around for quite some time, and it's always giving back to our community. And it's for their capital campaign, right?
Yes.
At the Jeffersonville location?
Correct.
As long as it was limited to that Jeffersonville location, I'd be okay with it.
Okay.
YMCA is one of the unique things in this city that almost, I would say, every person has somebody in their district that utilizes it.
Right.
And you can't say that about many things in this city.
Yeah.
Other than maybe going to pay a bill some more.
Driving a road, maybe?
Maybe, you never know.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, with that, I'll make the motion that we donate $5,000 to the Jeffersonville Clark County YMCA out of the gaming revenues, and it's to be linked to the capital campaign and use for programming and not operation calls.
I'll second. Comment?
Comment?
I don't like, I would rather know them ahead of time, so I'm gonna vote no, because I'm gonna think that through. I appreciate your comments, Scott, it makes a lot of sense, but I'm gonna vote no because of that.
Anybody else, comments? All right, well then, I have a motion, and I had a second, right? I have a motion in a second? Motion in a second? All in favor, signify that I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And there we have it.
Thank you.
Callie Yon?
That's me. I first want to say that I'm really excited, I see Don, he's still in the audience, really excited about the development. Every time I drive past our and cultural district, you know, it's not something that's always in the front of my mind, there's some other things that occupy the front of my mind, but then when I drive by, I see how brightly colored it is, it just rejuvenates all the excitement, and I'm sure a lot of other constituents feel that as well, so I'm happy to see progress. I regrettably will not be able to make the grand opening, I'll be out of town, but I am there in spirit, and I'm looking forward to the Sugar Skull Shake Shake. And then also, I want to just reiterate my thanks for the support of the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana. It's an issue that's, that's one that I care deeply about, and I sometimes wonder exactly what we are doing as a community to try to address this issue, and so it's great to hear that there are things that are happening and that we're addressing it, even if it's not something that we see all the time, because it is a very pressing issue, and it's one that I feel often gets forgotten. And then, finally, I know that there are some concerns about the budget that was passed on the first and second. I don't know if as a council, we want to discuss that more in another workshop, or over email, or how we want to do that, but I just wanted to throw it out there and see, and that's all I'll say about that. I don't think there's any holidays coming up, that's usually what else I'm anxious I don't think there's any holidays coming up, that's usually what else I mention, so that's it.
Two things. First, I know I asked a lot of questions during the white flag, it wasn't that I don't support it, just when we are contributing exactly half of their annual budget, I would like to see that budget. So in no way was I against it, I've helped that organization, and a lot of times, I know it's, it came up, you know, other communities aren't contributing, even though this one is in New Albany. When I did assist that board, the reason it was in New Albany is because they were the only place that would allow people to come in. We had a lot of local churches from New Albany and Jeffersonville were very interested until we asked to use their building and it went to Salvation Army. So I just want to echo that. And also, I want to echo Callie's comments about downtown. I didn't know you could paint pavement or asphalt like that, I see it every day.
Yeah.
And I would like to add, I'm probably the only city councilman in the state of Indiana that has a Sugar Skull tattooed on him. I just want to take credit. If possible, United States.
Can you just, can you just hold it up?
You can see probably after, tomorrow. And that's it.
Councilman Holden?
I wanted to take another opportunity to thank the administration for the work on the budget we made. The council did make some changes that we felt were necessary, but they were fairly minor in most places. But I think that it's, it's good that we're, we're going to be reinvesting in, in, you know, added public safety, and we have some places that we can, we can trim back if we need to. But I, over the last few months, I've, you know, been out talking to a lot of people, and a lot of people are very quick to say how far Jeffersonville has come in the last five to seven years. And it's because, you know, we've had a lot of success with the Arts Initiative. We've had a lot of success in trying to push for real action against homelessness. You know, it, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, big pot of all of these things that are going on throughout the city of Jeff, and, and people are noticing. And we talked to some guy on Saturday, he said that he had been gone for 15 years in the Carolinas and moved back here and couldn't believe the way the city has changed. And I think that there are a lot of people that are in this room and in this building that have a lot to do with that, and a lot of people that, you know, aren't even in this building that have a lot to do with that. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's highlighted that all the, all the good work that, that goes on is making a huge difference. We have people moving, moving back, moving back to town, opening businesses in town. And as it was mentioned, you know, we're, we're getting national attention. You know, places across the country are noticing what Jeffersonville is doing, and that's pretty special. So thanks to everybody who has a part of that.
Thanks, council, councilman.
And I'll try to be brief on this, but in voting for the funds for the YMCA, when Nathan talked about how much money we spend on animals and, at, at the dog pound, and how much has been projected that we're going to have to spend in the next few years when we start talking about over a million dollars for a new animal shelter, I think $5,000 for the YMCA is a very negligible amount, and I see it being wasted in, within our city time after time, and some of Wade's money is spent here. So I think the, when we look at our children, the children that go to the YMCA, and some of the senior citizens like myself that get the benefit from that program, I think maybe we might, should have maybe even done more. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. I am a YMCA member, card carrying member. So it's not, it's not against, yeah, it's not, it's not an eleven song, it's not against the YMCA. They got, they got their money. But, yeah, I just, I just, I would appreciate the common courtesy if somebody's going to ask for a chunk of money, that they would shoot an email ahead, ahead of time, something like that, that's all I'm asking for. Second thing, right after steamboat nights, we, we had an art commission meeting, and we recapped a lot of that. One of the things that was mentioned, I thought was a great comment that I never really thought of, is the end of the second, coming off the Big Four Bridge, there's no sign that says, "Welcome to Jeffersonville, Indiana." And, you know, there is on every interstate, but not walking. And somebody mentioned in our meeting that they were at the information booth or the desk, whatever, and they were, they mentioned, commented numerous times, they didn't realize they were in Indiana, because they said, "Welcome to Indiana." I said, "Whoa, no, we're visiting our family in Kentucky." And some people aren't the brightest in geography, but, but realistically, we should have something at the end of the bridge.
National side river that runs through the city, where you don't, you're in the same city, so it's possible that...
Yeah, sure. So... They sure it's at the end, so they don't turn around at the top. And so I just, I just felt that, I don't, I don't, I mentioned it to Les because he deals with redevelopment as well. It's Big Four, all that deals with the redevelopment, and we have a couple of members on redevelopment, I think. That's something that I think we should consider, and I would put it at the top, just because right when you get in Indiana, I want them to know and look around, see it right there.
And you're like 25%, you have 25% of the Ohio, right? So we're doing like 25% across the ridge is where you can...
I, I don't, I'll let them, I'll let them determine that.
We don't have 25% of it.
Okay. Three, three other things real quick. Ed Zee did text, he, he said he was trying to get here, but he was on the road, so that's why he was not able to be here. And weeks ago, asked me to mention that her aunt passed away, and so she is with the family tonight. And then, yeah, my, just my last comment goes with the budget. I appreciate the administration for putting forth what they believe is their, their priorities. And I, it's nothing against them. I just, I've, I've been on the council a long time, and I'm, I've, for the most part, I think I've been pretty conservative on things, too conservative for some, I know, but I, I just don't believe this budget is sustainable. We're spending, feels like almost everything we're bringing in. Now, there's some funds that have some extra in it, but it, I look, I'm not looking at this year, I'm looking at two and three years down the road. And the council and the administration there, they're going to have difficulty, and we'll make it next year, no problem. But that's my big concern is, I don't think you should spend everything that comes in, or most everything that comes in, knowing that through the year, we have appropriations and emergencies and needs that we've got to be able to go back and say, yeah, we can help with those. So that's the only position, that's why I'm positioned where I am, and just want to make that clear. That's all.
And maybe you say you had something?
I just wanted to see if Captain Moreland could hear better back there. Can you hear us okay?
You can hear, you all are, it's hard to hear you all all the time.
Yeah.
In the beginning, but when he did his adjustments, we could hear the speaker.
You could hear the podium better?
Towards the end, then it faded off again.
I got you.
It also depends on how close you are, how loud you're talking.
Right.
How close you are to the mic.
Right.
We also have some flickering of the screens, I had noticed, I don't know if I, looks like that went across.
No, it's the windows, the windows application that was causing the flickering. Of course.
But, thanks to, thanks to Darryl and Systemax for working on, working through our upgrades. They do, they would do work all across the country in places large and small, like Kentucky University and mega churches and small churches, and they're right here in Jeffersonville, so awesome. Thanks for helping us out.
Sorry to be late.
Well, then, yes, and that brings me to my comments. I think it's a direct reflection on me being president, so remember that from this day forward. With that, we will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And that is it.
You did a great job, guys.
Awesome.